Just gonna ask, can we get that flag in so we don't have to turn our backs to everybody?
Okay, first, we've got the consent agenda for today and the minutes of the October 29th, 2019 meeting to be approved. Is there a motion on those items?
Mr. Chairman, the minutes seem to be approved. I just have a correction on the discussion of the police comment on the tax shift. It says that we voted a percentage of 120 percent. We voted a shift of 125 percent.
Yeah.
That's correct.
There's a correction there to be made, so as long as-
Yeah, they recommended the 120, we had the 125.
Correct. That is correct, Mr. Chairman. So I'm just asking for a correction to reflect the actual meeting, and I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda included in the minutes of regular session selectmen's meeting of October 29th, 2019 with the correction.
Further discussion? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. A meeting mail, we do have a couple of items of meeting mail, but not listed here. Should they be here? We've gotten from the last meeting to this one, from a couple of resident pieces. Should those have been-
They're in for only.
They're in for only, okay. All right. I think a couple of them should be dismissed. Maybe we can get them on the agenda the next time, just we should at least allow the residents to know we received them.
Are those in the back of our book?
They were previously distributed either mailed or emailed, so we got them, but you know, I think if we got them, we should discuss it, or acknowledge receipt in a meeting. So there's been a couple of them recently, so.
Or just email each one to you.
Yeah, I've got them in my bag, so.
Okay.
Our 5:00 appointments to approve the transfer of annual liquor license from the Blue, from Rascals Inc., DVA Blue Lantern Cafe, to Pinky's Realty Corp., DVA Blue Lantern Cafe, Nancy Johnson Manager. There's a description of the property here, but we know the property. Buyers are here. Did you any presentation or anything you wanted to say to us? It's not required, you submitted a complete package, but I'd like to give you the opportunity if you- no?
We just wanted to know if it was possible if we could change the hours for kitchen?
For Sunday. For Sunday.
Could you submit something with the existing hours and what's proposed? I think part of what we gotta do is let the world around you know that you're making change in what there is and what you want to propose and what you want to do, so that anybody that wanted to comment on that. Kitchen seems like an easy one, though. I really, I don't think anybody's gonna protest that. Is that appropriate, or-
I think the kitchen hours, the existing hours are 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., and she's just looking to open at 7:00 a.m. for breakfast instead of 8:00 a.m., but not change anything else.
That wouldn't have anything to do with the ABCC. It would just be-
It would just be the town, but it does nothing.
Their discretion with the ABCC pretty much gives us the eight on Monday through Friday, I mean Monday through Saturday, and then 10 from Sunday on to whatever time on Sunday.
But they don't want to change anything with that.
That would be their discretion, too.
And if you-
Because it's only liquor, presented to liquor, though, not food.
Yeah, right.
You would have to just submit a letter of a change of the license to the board, and then we could either deny or approve it. So if you're only, you're asking for an extra hour, sounds like on Sundays only?
Saturdays and Sundays, but instead of breakfast.
Yeah, so.
That doesn't sound like, that doesn't sound like an issue. I think, yeah, I just think you should request it in writing for the changes. Is that appropriate? Just send a letter, and I don't, that doesn't sound like an issue at all.
You want us to write the letter tonight and just-
And we have to-
I just don't want it to prolong anything.
It's gonna go on the agenda for another meeting, so, yeah.
Okay.
Two weeks.
Well, just, yeah, as long as we approve the ABCC stuff tonight, that's not difficult.
Exactly. Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Gasper?
So, Mr. Chairman, I reviewed some of the application information that's here, and there seems to be some discrepancies with names, and I know the email addresses are wrong. There's the least felt wrong in the application, so I don't know if this is the application that needs to go to ABCC, but if it is, you need to look at this and make sure the information's correct that's been put into these applications.
It's going to be random, Mary.
So, I understand, but so the applicant contact here says Mary Cinerizio. On the backside, where the email address is wrong, because on the backside, it says your payment has been processed, so I'm looking at your payment confirmation information, and it seems like Mary is M. Lee, if I'm saying that correctly.
It's a double surname, yes.
So I just want to make sure that the names before this gets forward up to ABCC, and you guys have held up any longer than what you should be, that everything is correct on the applications before it moves forward. So there is some difference in names, and I just want to make sure it doesn't reflect you folks when we submit that application forward to ABCC. So can you just page me through that with Miss Leonard?
Okay.
Just make sure that all the information is correct with Miss Leonard tomorrow on and later on after the meeting, whenever we're done.
Absolutely.
Just to make sure that the proper information's going up and the confusion doesn't happen out there. I'm trying to get it before it gets there.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, other questions, comments?
Yep.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the transfer of an annual restaurant, all liquor, all alcoholic liquor license from Rascals Inc., DVA Blue Lantern Cafe, Paul Hippolyte O'Manager, to Pinky's Realty Trust, doing business as Blue Lantern Cafe, Nancy Johnson Manager, as presented.
Sir, second?
Second.
For the discussion?
Was that information correct? Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good luck. Just to submit the letter on that proposed change, we can deal with that at our next meeting, which is scheduled in two weeks.
Yep.
All right. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
We're 14 now.
All right, our 5:15 appointment is a petition of Verizon, and Verizon actually couldn't be here tonight, so that's going to be tabled.
Motion to table, Mr. Chairman?
Motion to table, second to the rush. It's tabled to a future date at mutual convenience and within notice requirements to the neighbors. There was one neighbor that was here, and I wouldn't know where we're on. We've got a, we're very early on the, our next two appointments. Is, oh, Kevin is here. All right. We've got a 5:30 meeting with the Board of Selectmen and the Housing Authority. We are 20 minutes early to that, so you're hoping with the Housing Authority, is anybody else coming, or?
Yes, well, I was told it was 5:45, but we-
Are you members of the Housing Authority? I don't even, you are. Okay. All right, so, yeah, we're early, so we're early. So why don't we, do you want to jump to Mr. Young or Mr. Page?
Sure, why don't we go with Mr. Young?
Let's go with Mr. Young. Henry was here.
Would just now be presented, Mr. Dakin had a team, he was under time constraint, so I had asked last week that we, that we go out of order, and have the TAs-
Mr. Dakin, how much time, how much time do you have?
You mean with the presentation?
Yes. No, how much, what time do you need to be at?
Only about an hour and a half. I'm wicked. I need to leave here no later than 6:30.
Oh, see.
I gotta be in Lakeville for 7:00 p.m.
All right, well, let's go, let's go with Henry, then. Let's, how much time is your presentation?
10 minutes.
Okay, we'll send it to you.
Okay. I'll talk very quickly. Good evening, my name is Henry Young, Town Planner, and on this night of our first snow and projected record cold temperatures, I'm gonna talk to you about a planning grant opportunity, the subject of which is global warming. I'm gonna step over here. Specifically, the grant, it looks like it. Specifically, the grant opportunity is referred to as the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program, or MVP Program, I'll be referring to it as, and the sort of the image captures the gist of what the grant opportunity is about, and that is with climate change occurring, global warming, we're gonna expect to see radically, radical shifts in our climate, more severe storms, sea level rise, and as we do, we're gonna see impacts to infrastructure like you see here. That's the gist of it. So it's a good, good image.
But that's not Lake Street, isn't it?
This is not.
Not, okay. Does look just like it does.
The premise of the grant is centered around this data, which is kind of interesting, wrap your brain around it. This is the state Massachusetts climate projections for the end of the century, so 2100. So the state is projecting that by 2100, we're gonna see an 18 percent increase in consecutive dry days, and a 57 percent increase in days with greater than one inch of rainfall. What that means is longer periods of no rain, almost semi-drought conditions, but when it does rain, it's gonna rain hard, much harder than before. About a net 7.3 inches additional annual rainfall. Temperature-wise, this is pretty interesting. A 10.8 increase in average annual temperatures, a 42 percent decrease in days per year with a minimum temperature below 32 degrees. So if you're talking to the Board of Health, and they're talking about Lyme's disease and West Nile virus, and you know, bugs aren't being killed by heart frosts, you know, this becomes significant. And a 1280 percent increase in 90-degree days per year. So much, much warmer, if these projections are true. What that, you know, that's not a Krishna, that's not a Massachusetts phenomenon, that's a global phenomenon that we're seeing, and so their projection for sea level rise is a staggering four to 10, somewhere between four and 10.5 feet along the Massachusetts coast. That's gonna radically change what, you know-
So that's an 80-year, by the end, that's 80?
Correct, 80 years from now. Okay.
That's a projection, Mr. Young, four to 10 and a half feet?
Yes, somewhere between, you know, four and 10 and a half feet. So if you just be, you know, if you look at the conservative side of this, a four-foot increases, huge.
Still too much.
Right, so in general, extreme weather increase in the frequency and magnitude of storms. So the state wants us to begin to think about this, and think about what the impact would be on our municipal infrastructure, and how we might plan ahead for that. So, you know, we have to be thinking about impacts to things like culverts and bridges, and any municipally coastal structures that we have, any high-hazard dams in the area, and also, you know, infrastructure like community housing that we may own, right? If we see a net increase of 10 degrees by the end of the century, projecting 5.4 by 2070, what does that mean in terms of heating and cooling of these buildings? So it's, you know, the impacts are not exactly where we might think they're gonna be, you know, so this planning process is a big brainstorming session to begin to unearth what the impacts might be. It's a two-step process. First, there's a planning grant, which we'll apply for now. As soon, as soon as I brief you, tomorrow morning, I'm gonna submit the grant to the state. It's a rolling grant that goes on through mid-January, and if we're awarded the grant, we get $15,000, which I'll expend it. Once you have the planning grant in place, then you can seek larger funds through the MVP action grants. That actually pays for infrastructure improvements. But this is where we're at right now. If we, if we secure this MVP grant, we'll go through a community planning process to understand climate change, what are vulnerabilities, or brainstorm that whole thing, identify what the priorities are, and get some order of magnitude costs to ready ourselves and be adaptive to this climate change. That is all rolled up into an MVP plan. That's gonna be the outcome of this phase. With that MVP plan in hand, then again, we go to the next step, and that is we go to the state and say, here's our plan, these are some items that we want to address, here's the price tag, and you, you know, try to secure funds that way. There's also a feedback loop to the state, as you know, as we go through our local MVP plan, we submit that information back to the state, and they begin to get a better picture of what's happening statewide. So that's the benefit to them. So I expect that we'll be awarded this grant, and once we have received funding, then we will procure a state-certified MVP provider. There's a list of vendors who can come in and help facilitate this process. We will establish, actually, we already have established, a core team of people who would be working on this grant on a, you know, day-by-day, week-by-week basis. Those are primarily the department heads. And then we will also seek to engage people in the community as well. So it's not just an in-house, internal thing. We want stakeholders from the community. And then again, once that plan is completed, not only do we use it to secure funds, to pay for infrastructure improvements, but that should also inform us on other plans, like the master plan, which we, you know, is gonna be one of our next steps as well. That'll inform the master planning process as well. So, you know, once we have the plan in place, and then we go for these infrastructure improvements, this is an order of magnitude of how much money is out there. Last year, 26 million were requested, of which 12 million was awarded to 36 projects, which is, ended up being an average of about $390,000 per project, some more, some less, okay? So out of 68 applied-for projects, 36 received awards, 32 did not. And just as an example-
Mr. Gasper, if I can.
Yeah.
When you said the 32 do not, do they give you a list of the ones that were awarded?
Yes.
The ones that were not awarded?
Yes.
So we have, you're in town, when we're looking to do certain things, we can look at dealers and say, well, they didn't get money for it. I'm more than likely, we may not get money for it, so let's put something else on the list that might fit.
Right, there's a strategy to what you asked for. Yes.
Exactly.
That is correct.
Thank you.
So, you know, just as an example, you know, you can think about culverts, you can think about dams, you can think about, you know, seawalls and that kind of thing, but, you know, just down the street here, Mattapoiset, they used funds to purchase 120 acres of, you know, coastal land to prohibit development, because once, you know, when you develop in a coastal flood zone, you're creating, you know, some liabilities. So it's just an example of, you know, we don't know where this process is gonna take us, and what we will be asking money for, and there's a strategy associated with that, but this is sort of an overview of where we're going. Any questions?
Average grant award was how much?
390,000. And a fair number of projects were.
Almost 50 percent.
Right. Thank you.
Was the first year 2019?
Second.
Oh, that was the second year. So some of the people that may have went for a project grant money, they may have not looked at the list for the previous year and go, ah.
We'll be smarter.
Yeah, we'll be a little bit smarter.
So do you have projects in mind, or is the consultant gonna come in and help us identify?
The project, the consultant will help us come in and identify what our vulnerabilities are, and then what, how that translates into projects.
Okay.
So there is a strategy as to, you know, what we would want to apply for. There is, you know, a match percentage as well, so that can, you know-
So we know the kinds of things likely to approve and the things that not likely to approve.
Yeah, we'll be able to tell by looking at the, you know, what was awarded in the past.
But they mandate that we have a consultant before we can even start this process.
Correct. You have to have an MVP consultant from the state's approval list. They help us develop the plan.
And we're so pretty certain we're gonna get the initial $15,000, so let's get it.
All right.
Do you need a vote or anything from us?
Yeah, and if I can, some of the things, when we look at this grant, so again, we'll apply for, we'll most likely get the planning grant, we'll come up with a plan, but one of the bigger items that could be on our list in our plan relates to sewer. We have a lot of sewer projects coming up, and these, the grant money here for the action grants, it has been used in the past, and I got confirmation from the representative there that it could be used to help with sewer projects, also for MS4 permitting. So these are some bigger things that are coming up for us, that are costly, that this grant could help offset cost for.
And the MS4 permitting is all related to stolen wire, right?
Yes.
And isn't that around 50 grand for that permit?
Um, we got an initial estimate from a consultant for services that would be 50,000. I think anything relating to it will be expensive, but that cost could go up or down from there, so.
So the last issue, it would be appropriate to get a vote of support for this grant application for the record.
Can I ask one more question?
Go on, Mr. Gasper.
Before we get ourselves in bed with this MVP grant, is there any strings attached where once we apply for certain grants, and once they provide funding for, and we're approved for these things, are we, are there strings attached to where we'll never get out of it?
The, I always look for that. And the only string that's attached is we have to submit a letter every year, how are we doing on our plan. There's no mandate to perform on it, it's just an update to the state.
Great.
We had a motion to endorse the application for the $15,000 grant.
Will I second?
I'll pass with the motion. You make the motion?
Yes, it's a move.
Mr. Gasper? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
So the board will be included in this consulting kind of thing, where we'll be engaged with these folks that come into town and, you know, look at different things, and the board can give our ideas towards what, like I mentioned, Lake Street already to the board, perhaps it's be good for that, sewer projects, so a couple of things there.
Right, we will have essentially workshops, which will be open to the public, so there is an opportunity for whoever has an interest to participate.
And do you think, because of waterfront, I know we don't own massive waterfront real estate, but there are some properties along the river that could be impacted by sea level guys?
Absolutely.
So you think that consultant would probably say, let's go down and take a look, and wanna do a little, like a little walk-through or a golf cart ride down through that property? This is gonna be a concern, so you might have to engage with certain individuals along the river line?
Right, I expect that, for instance, we'll have a contour line, which shows elevations, and you can, which is a bowl, right? The river is a bowl. And if the sea level is rising, you'll be able to look at the contour line, which constitutes, say, a minimum four, you know, foot sea level rise, and see what the impact is, and you can take that all the way out to a 10-foot sea level rise, and how that would impact our waterfront.
Sure, for our topography over there, that's what I'm trying to make, is if your, if your sea level rises going up four feet, it could be going in 20 or 30 feet.
That's exactly right.
That's something that they'd be looking at, and it would affect some of our property owners down along the river.
Yes, it would.
So we'd have to engage and notify them, let them know this is happening.
Right.
Just in case they're impacted by our actions, I would guess. We're gonna make changes down there. Could affect them, right?
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Dean.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, I don't think, the quicker item on the agenda is the Housing Authority, I believe, but I don't think we've got a quorum of your membership, do we? Say that again?
What's that?
We don't have a quorum of your membership yet, do we?
We'll have it.
Yeah, we're not there yet, right? So we're gonna, we're gonna jump, we're gonna jump to Mr. Dakin. I know you'd be quicker, so I was gonna go to you if you were ready, but let's go to Mr. Dakin, Mr. Pecos, presentation on the town administrator screening process.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Dean.
You know, I have the honor and privilege of being elected the chairman of a group of diverse, unique, and talented civic-minded citizens selected by this board to screen for the town administrator position. And I'd like to take a few minutes to acknowledge some individuals for the benefit of our residents who are watching, who contributed significantly to this effort. I'd like to start with Lisa Lennard and Rachel Shabano for the excellent support of the staff during the entire process. Thank you. Committee members, I'd like to recommend or commend Heather Sylvia, Council on Aging Director. She hosted the meetings at the Council on Aging, was the secretary, did an excellent job with the meeting minutes, and she provided water and snacks for all who attended. Pam LaBarthe, Town Clerk, valuable assistance with logistics for everyone, for instance, candidate photos, and question portfolios for all committee members. Jennifer Downing, School Committee Member. John Hauprof, former Town Clerk, Finance Committee and School Committee Member. John Roy, a teacher in the Acushnet School System with 24 years' experience. And Tom DeCosta, who, as we all know, was the driving force behind our Veterans Memorial at Hope Park. Bob St. Jean, former Selectman, current Chair of the Finance Committee. And John Golda, a resident contractor and our community cable television technician. Further, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the invaluable assistance of Mr. Kevin Pecos for his professional networking, his background, experience, and leadership in this endeavor. Now I'll get into the nuts and bolts of this. We met on five occasions from September 25th through November 6th, and on the first meeting, we received an overview of this process from Mr. Pecos. We reviewed the open meeting law, public records law, and the need to maintain confidentiality of all the applicants. Myself and Heather Sylvia were elected Chairman and Secretary, respectively. At the first meeting, we received 10 resumes and a matrix score sheet provided by Mr. Pecos to rank applicants for the preliminary interviews. Now, I don't know if you gentlemen have seen the score sheets, but some of the articles or items in there that we rated each applicant on were years of experience as a town administrator, years of experience in government positions, whether the applicant had a bachelor's degree, or a bachelor's and a master's degree, or a master's degree in public administration. Further, there had to be demonstrated budget and finance experience, human resources and communications experience, collective bargaining experience. This is the big matrix. Demonstrated purchasing experience, and there was extra recognition given to someone who was a Massachusetts certified public procurement officer. And it, the far right of the matrix was a column entitled "Other," that if any member felt any particular applicant deserved some credits that were not included in what I just mentioned, they were allowed to place it in that other category. The weighting of each category was then discussed, debated, and agreed upon. The format for the interviews was discussed and agreed upon. And at that point in time, Mr. Pecos provided a list of questions from prior interviews, and the committee decided to select three each, or instead devise their own questions for the interviews. That was our first meeting. On October 16th, we interviewed our first two candidates, and a second group of resumes was distributed and scored, and forwarded to Mr. Pecos via email to compile. Now, just so you know, when, when these scorings were done, they were done independently. Each member of the steering committee did it independently and sent it independently to Mr. Pecos. So each one of us did not know what any other member of the committee, how they were ranking. On October 21st, we interviewed two more candidates, and the third and final batch of resumes was distributed and individually scored, and again, distributed to Mr. Pecos. And we had two more evenings of interviews, October 28th and November 6th. We interviewed two candidates at each meeting.
Mr. Dakin, can I jump in with a question?
Sure.
How many applications might be the wrong word? How many expressions of interest, written expressions of interest?
I was just getting to that.
Okay, all right. How many people do we interview?
In summary, over 23 resumes were received, and it reflected widespread response geographically as follows. Southeastern Mass had seven, seven responses. Western Mass, four. The North Shore, meaning north of Boston, four. Cape Cod, two. Metro Boston, one. And there were five out-of-state responses, one each from Maryland, Nevada, South Carolina, Florida, and Vermont. It comprised 10 well-qualified town administrator applications, as well as some with municipal chief financial operators and planners, and they all had extensive municipal experience. chief financial operators and planners, and they all had extensive municipal experience. Again, we used the resume scoring system to establish a point cutoff factor. So, you know, 23, everyone ranked from 1 to 23. And on November 6th, the final calculations were conducted by each committee member independently, again, in confidence, and given to Mr. Pecos to compile on a single score sheet. So again, each member of the committee did not know how each other member was scoring after all the interviews. After the scoring was revealed among the committee, we readily achieved consensus as to the top three finalists and began some discussion to determine how many finalists we would present to you gentlemen. It was decided to submit the top five because Mr. Pecos noted that several of our finalists were also applying to other cities and towns and that we could lose one or more in this process. So we decided to submit five instead of three. We believe this group of five represents extremely well-qualified municipal managers, each with substantial experience. We believe these top five of 23 represent an outstanding group of individuals, and we're confident that whom member the board chooses, the citizens of Acushnet will benefit greatly. Committee is extremely proud of its work, and we're grateful to have been afforded the responsibility to assist the board and the town with this recruitment effort. We look forward to your deliberation and to its selection of one of these finalists to become Acushnet's next Town Administrator. Thank you.
Mr. Dakin, how many face-to-face interviews were there? How many people did you bring in?
Eight.
Eight came in, okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Gasper.
So, Mr. Dakin, you know, great work, the whole committee. I got a lot of feedback on it and I'm overwhelmed with all the positivity that I got out of every committee member, but, you know, obviously you're not going to stand at that podium and thank yourself. So I would like to personally thank you for taking on the role of Chairman and the responsibilities that come along with that and dedicating as much time and effort as you did to the process as all our other committee members did as well. But being the Chairman, you know that role is very difficult, and I was pleased to know that you were announced the Chairman. You're a phenomenal individual. I'm, I'm very pleased that the committee was able to work together and come up with the final results of these five applicants, if that's what you're going to forward to us. And then Mr. Pecos will talk, but, you know, again, thank you very much for the work that you've done and all the committee members have done. Actually, it was, it was, it was very telling when people spoke to me about the process, how well it went and how well everybody worked together.
Thank you very much.
It goes to show you the sense of community here in the Town of Acushnet, right? So, thank you again, Mr. Dakin. I can't, you know, it was, it was an excellent process. It was an excellent effort for all of you guys to put that effort in and spend that much time doing what you did for this board, so again, thank you.
Thank you. It was a true team effort, and hopefully it'll bear some good fruit. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Les.
Mr. Pecos, welcome.
Thank you. So the first thing I can tell you is that, yeah, the citizens of Acushnet and the board are very, very fortunate. This is an extraordinarily good committee to work with. You know, when you come to a town and you don't know folks and you're going to do this sort of thing, you don't quite know what to expect. But I don't think, you know, I've been in municipal government for 42 years, I don't think I've seen a more cooperative, insightful group of people than the folks that did this. They asked a lot of provocative questions. I scored all the resumes myself in private and then compared my scores, and I knew most of the applicants because I recruited a lot of them. And I will tell you that the members of the committee very accurately scored, scored all the resume candidates, and that's not an easy thing because sometimes you've got to go looking, you know, for material, either in the resume, the cover letter, or whatever. So they did a great job. They invited 10 folks, as Les told you, to come interview, and eight accepted, two, one didn't accept and one withdrew. The great news is this committee has given you five really excellent people. Any one of these people, I'm quite convinced, can do a great job for you and for the citizens of Acushnet. So kudos to the committee, great, great effort. They worked incredibly smoothly together. Les did a great job as Chair, and the other members of the committee all performed top-notch, and it really is a credit to Acushnet, the good work that was done. So, we have the names of the five candidates. We, I have called them all, and they have all agreed to have their names be now made public because finalists are public, as the board is aware. But before I do that, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I don't know if there's any discussion you'd like to have about the process or where you'd like to go at this point. We are ready, I'm ready to give this part of the report and the packets to the board if, depending upon what you'd like to do right now.
Chairman, you want to, you got any to go?
I, I would like to know all the hard work that the committee has done, right? I, I would like for you to lay out to the board, Mr. Pecos, the next, the legal process moving forward for us to take.
Sure. Attorney General's ruling on this subject has been pretty clear-cut. What she said, it's actually two AGs ago, that, this is an interpretation of the open meeting law, and what she said was that the identities and the resumes of the semifinalists can remain confidential. There was a great deal of discussion about this because candidates don't want their name necessarily out there and have citizens and their boards knowledgeable that they're looking, you know, if they're basically not going to be a viable candidate. So there was a bit of a compromise struck with the AG, and she ended up saying semifinalist applicants, if you will, are confidential. And that is the reason the board can't see the semifinalists and why you use a screening committee and rely on the, the good work of the screening committee, because they look at all the candidates and then they decide who they want to interview, and then they present with you the finalists. The AG has further applied that the identities of the finalists are public. The minute you get these, these are public. So before we give them to you, we have to call the candidates and say, congratulations, you're a finalist. Tuesday night, your name potentially is going to be publicly revealed, are you okay? And five out of five have said yes. I have seen situations where finalists say no, because they don't have a good feel and they don't want to risk, you know, having their name out there. But in this case, all five did. And so the process that the board, the board can consider any process you'd like. The only caveat, the only requirement is the interviews that you conduct must be public, resume verification, background checks, reference checks, all that sort of thing, you know, I'll do that for you if you'd like, that's part of my responsibility too.
I was hoping you were going to say that.
Happy to do it. My suggestion to boards is always, I wouldn't bother doing that with all five folks, I would go through your interviews, select your candidate, and then prior to starting the contract negotiations, I'm happy to help you with that as well, that's when we verify resumes and check references on just that one candidate.
Questions, Pecos, are we obligated to interview all five?
Nope.
No, so we could...
Once these are given to you, the board can do whatever you'd like with them. The only caveat is whatever you do must be done in public. So if you have a deliberation, you look at these, you look at the resumes, and you say, you know, we'd like to have some further discussion, we don't want to interview all five, we want to interview four or three or whatever, you're perfectly allowed to do that, but your discussion must be at a public meeting.
I don't, I don't know what's in there, so I, I...
Yeah, I will tell you that there are...
No, I don't, I'm just trying to understand.
As soon as you green light me giving you the names and you're done with process questions, I will tell you a quick, literally five-second description of each of these candidates, and what you're going to see is that you've got an extraordinary depth of talent, and we're really very fortunate. You know, I went through this process with Kevin and the other Selectmen three odd years ago, and we did not have this depth of talent, not even close. So we really, this committee has really hit it out of the park for you, they truly have.
Oh, Mr. Gasper.
So before we talk about anything, I'm going to ask a question about what's inside the envelope. You made a comment about background checks, like resume background checks?
No, no, we haven't done that.
Does the board have resumes in there for the five?
These are resumes, yes. These are resumes and cover letters.
So the five resumes for the five screening committee, the recommendation they've provided the board of Selectmen with a resume?
Yep.
And whatever background they may have outside of just a resume, cover letter or whatever else.
Cover letter.
So everything the screening committee seen, we're going to see?
No, you're not going to see all the resumes.
No, no, just those five.
Just, oh, yes. Everything that the screening committee saw in these five people, you're getting a comment.
That's, that's my question.
And some of them submitted, you know, additional, additional material attached to their resumes and things, so yeah, you're going to see all the, everything that they submitted, you'll get.
So you're, so everything's going to be done publicly, which is fine. We got five applicants. You're basically, Chairman asked a question on whether or not we have to do all five or not, and you said, no, we can do whatever we want. So if the board of Selectmen will take those envelopes, we looked over the five candidates, we post a meeting, obviously, to discuss the five candidates. If we come, if we narrowed, like the screening committee narrowed it down from 23 applicants down to five, we could do the same. We could say we don't want to look at all five and interview all five. This is like, he'll score the top five, I'll score mine, and if we end up with the same, let's say we all end up with the same top three, we could just opt to do those three?
You could.
And bring them in and maybe do a couple of questions each. Selectmen can ask a question or two.
Yeah, what I'll do for you is similar to what I, if you'd like, it's similar to what I did for the screening committee. I'll generate a substantial list of questions. These are questions I've actually accumulated over the years, some that I've done, actually picked up a few more questions from the screening committee, and I'll send you all of them, 50 questions. And then my suggestion is you choose from those or make up your own, three or four questions, because frankly, in a one-hour-odd interview, you're only going to get the three or four questions.
Yeah.
Typically, the interview process is board members say hello, you give the candidate five or 10 minutes, they give you the highlights and tell you about themselves, that's just kind of as an adjunct. Remember, the public hasn't necessarily seen these, so letting the candidate tell you a little about themselves kind of tells the public who they are. Then the board goes into its questions. There'll be two types of questions, there'll be kind of canned questions that come off the list. There'll also be questions you'll want to ask based on what you see in these resumes, or in the case of the screening committee, some of them did some Googling work, you know? It's 2019, people Google now. So they went out and they did some work, and then they saw some things and they asked the candidates, hey, tell us about this that we saw. So they might want to do that and develop some questions that don't immediately appear right off the resume. Candidates will answer the questions, and then I always recommend you give the candidate five, six, seven minutes at the end to ask you questions and/or summarize whatever they like you to know. Always a good thing to ask the candidates, ask you questions, because that kind of gives you some measure about how well did they prepare for this and what do they know about the town already. Kind of tells you how serious their commitment is to the community. Somebody who comes in here, does the interview, doesn't do a lot of prep work, you know, you might want to wonder how deep their commitment is. People who are serious about wanting to do this job, they're going to do a lot of work before they come in here. They should.
Mr. Pecos, so we obligated to ask each candidate the same question?
You and I.
We're not, we can go.
Sometimes boards...
Completely different experience for every candidate.
Yeah, sometimes boards and screening committee had core questions, so each member had a question to ask and two backup questions. They also tailored some of their questions to resumes and things they saw on the internet, and some didn't ask their question, they skipped their question. But I would say for each candidate, 75% of the questions asked were the same questions asked at every candidate.
We just went through the process of identifying and hiring a new police chief, and that process under civil service was very structured, very regimented, and...
Yeah, you did an assessment center.
Our hands were a little bit tied as to how we managed that process.
Yep, done a bunch of them.
That's sort of what our recent experience is, and I just want to make sure we're complying with the rules.
Yeah, that's a little different process. I actually sit on assessment center teams for some other, for some other companies, and that process is heavily regulated by DPH, and it's a little different, but it's not completely dissimilar. I mean, you're at, you know, in that case, you've got the assessment center results gets in front of it, so scoring, and then you ask interview questions and situation questions. This is probably going to be a little different. I don't think you're probably going to give your candidates scenarios, but you might, you know, you might want to do that. But usually for the Town Administrator, once it gets to this level, these people are all skilled in terms of knowing the job. Your screening committee's done great work, there's nobody in this pile who couldn't walk in tomorrow and be your new Town Administrator. So from a technical point of view, you don't need to explore, hey, have you ever done collective bargaining? These people have all done that.
Right.
Have you ever done grant writing? Yes, they've all done it. What you're really trying to determine is who fits with you, you, the three Selectmen, and who fits with the community, because they're all people that can do the job, but it's a question of which of them can do it best. And that is a question which, you know, is left to two levels of discernment of the screening committee, all of whom are prominent citizens from the community, did a great job trying to decide who fits, and now you as the elected representatives make the top final decision who fits. But that's the job, who fits, not so much who can do it. They can all do it.
Mr. Gasper.
Would it be your recommendation to ask the same questions to the candidates? Because we did that kind of with the chiefs' positions to kind of make it equal to all candidates, so I...
Yeah, I actually required to do it for an assessment center process.
I did it in the last round. I had my own five or seven questions when we were in satellite remote locations, right? And I asked the same five or seven questions, because to be fair to everybody, it's, you're asking the same questions, you're not asking somebody, you know, a little lollyball question over here, and then you're asking this guy, you're trying to give a fair assessment. So to me, it was nice to ask the same questions to everybody, and I scored them all, every question, I scored them, and basically came up with...
You're going to have more time with each candidate than the screening committee had, because they screened, they had to screen a lot more people. So you're going to be able to ask more questions per board member. So my suggestion is have two or three that you ask every candidate, and then have a couple that are tailored to the specific candidate. Now, if you don't see anything in the resume or you don't see anything on the internet that causes you pause, that causes you to ask a question to explore something, then you may want to ask the same five questions, you know, of each person, but you'll find these folks, you know?
I want, I just want to ask the Chairman, Mr. Chairman, when, when you screened, Mr. Pecos has alluded, has alluded to Googling candidates, and I know that's something that a lot of people do so you can find our information, did your screening committee members of yours, he did say that some of them might, may have done that. Did you, do you feel that your screening committees already done their fair share of that process?
You mean?
The Googling thing, the background kind of looking at?
Where it was privately done by individuals, I really can't answer that. I know personally, I didn't do it. I do know some members of the committee did do it, and it did raise some questions during the process that were asked at the meeting. What I found is we had some questions, you know, that were preconceived to ask of everyone, but what I found with me anyway, during the interview process, something comes up and it's going to hit you, and you're going to want to ask that. I had some things that arose by reading the resume, other resumes, didn't. But sometimes during the process, something's going to come up in your mind, the light goes on, I would suggest you ask the question.
Okay. Town administrators work in a hazardous profession, you know, in terms of, like ball players, baseball managers, you get fired for doing your job and you get fired for not doing your job. Almost invariably, you get fired for doing your job, most of them are pretty talented people. Far more than ever get fired for not doing their job, but it happens. And so I'm not saying whether there's a candidate in here that's been separated from service or not, but we have a saying in the town manager profession, if you've been working 20 or more years and you haven't been fired, you're probably not doing the job, because Town Administrators are required to take risks on behalf of the community and make decisions that they know are going to make people upset. But they have to put the community first, and so it's a bit of a high-risk job. So you might find a candidate who, you know, is currently working on a severance agreement or is in transition, as we like to call it, it's a euphemism for got fired, looking for my new job. And you Google that and you find that, and you might want to say, geez, I saw these headlines. A cautionary note I did with the committee is I said, look, I, please don't Google these candidates. And then I said, and I know you're going to do it anyways, so take what you read with a grain of salt. The reason is there is so much misinformation that gets put out in the press. Does anybody really believe in 2019 that the press is 100% accurate about anything anymore? I doubt... I doubt it. So it is very much the case that what gets reported is often not accurate. And I told the screening committee a couple stories about myself, what got reported, what I was really doing, anecdotally to illustrate what often gets reported has got nothing to do with what's actually going on behind the scenes, that the board and the manager are not allowed to talk about. But people did do it, and so candidates were required to answer those tough questions. They know, if they're working off a severance agreement, that when they come in and interview, they're gonna be asked about that. They know that. So they, they're prepared to tell you that. And shame on the board if you don't ask, because if you don't ask, the public is for sure looking up and wanting to know, you know, "Okay, this person got fired in another community, why are you three gentlemen not asking about that?" So you will, and that's fine, that's fair-
Well, we hire somebody, and then that makes the paper.
Yeah, I mean, that's fair game, and that's expected to happen. The candidates know that's gonna happen. I'm not saying it's, because frankly, I'm trying to think about these five folks. If anybody is in that category, and I can't remember off the top of my head, but whether they are or they aren't, there are things about them that you may, you know, discover looking at their backgrounds on the internet, and you may have questions about that. I'd say, "What's this about?"
You've got three envelopes, one for each of us, isn't it?
We do. So are you ready for the names?
Sure. So just to clarify, for the next step for the board is, we should, we should figure out whether or not we want to bring in three or bring in all five. And then from there, we can discuss, you know, we have to discuss and say what questions we're gonna ask, but I don't know if we wanna publicly announce that, or we just do that the day we bring these candidates in.
Well, again-
Give it a word.
What's the minimum rule, Julie, like we did last time?
Yeah, I don't think you can do that.
There may be, there may be an issue there.
You don't need to do that, because he said you don't have to ask the same questions. So I can come up with my two questions, and you can come up with his two questions.
What I would do for you is I'll send you a list of fifty questions that are typical interview questions for town administrator-type folks, okay? And then my suggestion is, you don't want to pick the same five or six questions, you know? You don't wanna have Dave take five of your questions, because you think you're gonna ask five, and then all of a sudden, he goes first and he asks five questions, and you send away two questions. So you send your questions back to me. I will screen them to make sure you're not asking the same, and send them all back to you, and say, "Okay, here's Kevin's fives, here's the chairman's fives, here's Dave's five questions." So you all know what everybody's gonna ask. And then ordinarily, the process is, the chairman starts with a different board member for each interview, because whoever starts may get another question or two in before, you know, as you go through the time limit you set for the process. You're also gonna have follow-up questions. You know, someone's gonna ask a question, candidate's gonna answer it, and one of you is gonna wonder about that answer, and you're gonna say, "Wait a minute, I got a follow-up question." So those things will happen ad lib on the spot as you're going through. So my suggestion in terms of the process is, I'll give you the five resumes tonight. You folks take some time to read them and think about it. Come back to a meeting, and I'm gonna say one thing about why speed is gonna be important here. Come back as soon as you can, and decide, we're gonna interview three or five, or whatever it is you decide. And then we pick some dates immediately to do those interviews. Meantime, while you're doing that, I'll send you the questions. You pick your, I'm gonna suggest five, because that's an easy number. Send them back to me, send them back to me, and then I'll put your five together with each of your names, and send them back by email to you, so you know who's gonna ask what. Now that's, and then you're kinda ready to go. So at the next meeting, when you come back to decide of these five, and you're gonna interview all five, four or three, what? You've already accomplished, your question list is done, you know who you're interviewing, all you gotta do is pick a night and get on with it. Now, why is there a need for timely action? I know for a fact, because it's a small world, some of these folks are candidates elsewhere. A couple of them are finalists right now elsewhere. You're going to lose them, very possibly. Now, we started later than most communities that are currently recruiting. Current recruiting efforts going on, P-Town, Hanson, Charlton, Ashburnham, and-
We started late, I mean, it's just natural timing.
We started behind them, right. That's just, right, it's just when Brian left, and you began. It was no, you know, no consequence of anything, we just-
We moved, that's why.
Now, interestingly enough, the screening committee, due to their efficiency, you are now, you have leapfrogged almost everybody else. So you are in the applicant finalist interview stage, so you're ahead of everyone else. However, two of those communities have determined their finalist list, they just haven't announced it publicly yet. But it's gonna go public fairly soon, and then they're gonna start their-
So we're doing that tonight?
So, some of these people are finalists elsewhere, and if you don't move expeditiously-
And they've been announced elsewhere as well, is what you're saying?
Nobody has announced yet. Yes, very weird.
Yeah, okay, you're reading my comments.
I know one community that picked their finalist last week, they're not gonna announce until the eighteenth.
And you know, because you're involved in that process?
No, because it's a small world. And I'm all over.
People talk. So could I suggest, could I suggest that we receive the names tonight, and maybe come back, come back here next Tuesday night, and decide whether we're gonna interview all five, or three, or whatever the number is? Does that make sense to you two?
I'll come back sooner, if that's, if whatever the board wants to do. We don't have to do a Tuesday night at five o'clock meeting, just because that's, if that's all the business we're taking off, we can do this whenever we want, right? We can do it at nine o'clock in the morning, we can do it at noon time if we want, but we-
It's just, it's gotta be posted meeting, obviously.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add to what Mr. Pecos said. Time is of the essence here, and the sooner you can move this process forward, the better, the better off you'll be.
Mrs. Lynn, if we posted a meeting, it's as soon as we can.
If you'd like to potentially look at all five, then it would be in your best interest to move sooner rather than later, because you, you know, could lose one or two of them fairly quickly.
We could meet Friday morning, if that works.
I think that the board should be, I mean, we have five resumes, guys. We are Wednesday, Thursday, two days to basically flow through these resumes and say, make a decision on, do we wanna bring in all five, or do we wanna be, bring in all three? That's pretty much all the meeting's gonna be, but it has to be a public meeting, right? So this meeting can actually take ten minutes, right?
Yeah.
And get Mr. Pecos moving, get us the questions.
Yeah, I'll have the questions out to you tomorrow.
We may and may not use your questions, right? I mean, the board has that.
These are just suggested questions.
If I look at your fifty questions, and I have my own that I've already done before, and I say, "Yeah, you know what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use these two or three questions." I'll bring in some more, so if he starts asking a question that's somewhat related to mine, I'm gonna move on to my next question.
I don't have to, you don't have to send them back to me, and I'll compile them, as long as, my suggestion is, if you're gonna go that way, then make sure you've got maybe ten questions.
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying.
So that if, so that you're not overlapping with one of them.
So how much, how much time do you think would be good to give the applicants for response to the question? Like, if we're gonna ask a question, do we, do we give them five-minute time limit, ten-minute time limit?
Well, what Les did, and it was the first time I've ever seen it done, and it was very effective, the committee decided they wanted to do about one-hour interviews, and they decided that they, I'll be sure we're all here. And they also decided that they might do follow-up, they might bring candidates back to, you know, lower the number. But they decided the initial interview would be about an hour. So what Les did is, he took the nine questions, and he, if you do the math, he did five minutes per question, no more, and that allowed five, five or ten minutes for introduction, five or ten minutes at the back end for questions, and a couple minutes for break in between. And so what Les did is, he kept it moving along very, very smoothly, and on a couple of times, he literally said, "Watch," and the candidate ran out of time, and he cut it off and said, "We're going to the next question."
That's how Les is.
Right, so what that did-
What you'll find, okay, if the interviewee knows the answer to the question, five minutes runs out quickly. If he or she doesn't know the answer to the question, to the, you know, the interviewee, it's an eternity.
Yeah. So I think, to be fair, Mr. Chairman, I think we ought to, I mean, can we just, we could say tonight that we only wanna ask three questions, each selectman asks three questions, and if we happen to bring in five on Friday, when we decide whether there's three or five candidates. I mean, if we bring in five candidates, right, giving them each, you know, three questions apiece, that's nine questions. Again, times five minutes, that's the same process that the committee went through, that's five hours we're here.
Right.
And I don't wanna be here for five hours.
Well, one of the- One of the suggestions I'd make to you is, if you decide you wanna interview all five candidates, and I think you frankly have five awful good people here. So if you're able to narrow it down just by looking at resumes, good luck.
If, and if we, that's what I'm trying to say, so if we do it in two separate nights-
Yeah, I would say, do two nights, do like three and two, don't, because you can't, if you do five, here's, here's what's gonna happen. The first one or two, you're gonna forget who they are. We literally, and Pam was great, she went online and got pictures of all the candidates, because we knew interviewing that many people, that many weeks apart, we would forget people. And so all the members of the committee kept their own notes next to the picture, so that they know, you know, they would remember to refer back.
Mr. Pecos, if we, with the police chief candidates, we submitted, we asked them to respond to some questions in writing, is that typical?
That's appropriate, too. That happens, yep, absolutely, yep.
Could I just, could I suggest two things? That we meet, we meet Friday morning at eight AM, is that, and all having, have reviewed all five candidates, and decide at that time, and that's a quick meeting, I think, if we wanna meet with all five. So that's a quick meeting. It'll be published as eight o'clock Friday morning, can you, what, eight-hour thing?
I cannot be here with you Friday morning, but I don't know what to do.
I think that one's fine for this, that one's fine for this, we don't need you. And then we will, after that, once we decide if we wanna introduce, interview three or five, we'll get back to you with the names, you would coordinate. And we'll pick some, we'll pick some dates as to, as to our availability. I'd like to do it in two consecutive nights.
Yeah, that's usually the best.
And get everybody in as quickly as possible, and, does that make sense?
Did you, with the screening committee or you, Mr. Pecos, when you had these, these folks in, in the interviews, did you ask them if there was like a good time, or was it always a nighttime, was it always a nighttime thing?
We picked two nights initially, and then we had three candidates, and we had another couple nights, so every time I was calling candidates, I was giving them a couple nights. And it was, it got, it gets very complicated, because somebody will say, "I can't do this night, but I can't do this night, I can't do seven, I could do eight," and you, you really lose your mind, because you end up calling back somebody who's already booked and saying, "I can't give you that, can you do this?" I'll take care of that.
Can you prescreen these five candidates, and call them up and say, "Hey, the board met on Friday, the board can discuss maybe the next week, dates that we can meet?"
The minute you give me dates.
Maybe you could call them up and say, "Can you make this date, can you make this date?"
Yes, I do that for you.
Two of them might say, "I can't do Tuesday night, but I can do the Wednesday night," and the other three, you're gonna have to try to force it to the Tuesday night, right?
I take care of that for you, yep. The minute you give me the dates.
You said two, both are in the day.
Well, so I was asking, did you think these candidates would be open to a day meeting?
Oh, sure, absolutely. Well, let me put it this way. I worked in the business for forty-two years, if I wanted a job, and somebody said, "I need you here Tuesday at noon," I'm gonna be there Tuesday at noon. Now, if, you know, my mother died, and I'm going to the funeral, I'm gonna tell you, "Hey, I got a legit-" That's part of what you have me do for you, so I'll tell you, "Hey, this person couldn't make it, they got a legitimate excuse, we're gonna have to pick another day." But usually, you give me the dates that you wanna meet, and the times you wanna start, and I'm gonna assume, unless you tell me otherwise, an hour per candidate. I'm gonna call them up right away and start filling those slots for you, and if there's a problem with one of them, I'm gonna get back to you. It'll probably take me a day or two to fill all the slots. I'll email you back, say, "Here's your schedule. This person couldn't do either of those dates, and we're gonna have to pick a third date in order to accommodate that person."
We'd accommodate that.
Did you have interviews on the weekend, I mean, on the Saturday?
No, we couldn't get, with nine people, we couldn't get, it was, the best we were able to do is to come up with one night each week for four weeks.
So probably it's with the committee, not with the candidates.
Yeah, and that actually, it wasn't a candidate.
So far, from my perspective, if we could do a Saturday, we could probably, could we get them in on a Saturday?
You could do a Saturday, you could probably do all five. It's gonna be a long day, but, yeah.
I don't think it's, we can't lie, I'm sitting here shaking my ass, saying, "No way." I don't think it's bad to the applicants.
It's not.
That we're gonna be sitting there screening these folks, we're gonna be tired, we're not gonna be the same guys that we were in hour one, as we have in hour five. You're gonna be with that fifth candidate as well.
If you tell me you're doing five, and I call them up, and I say, "I got five slots," they're all gone, one slot. The last slot of the day, they're all gonna want it, because they all wanna be the last place.
You need to be respectful to the applicant, so I think if you own three-
Couple of nights, much better.
To do it that way. Les is waving his hand, doing two nights, because he knows he's been strung to the process, so.
Because, you know, frankly, if you're sitting there after the fourth or fifth interviewee, I mean, you're not even aware of what the hell's going on, really.
That's what I'm trying to say, it's disrespectful, right? So I don't, I respect them.
You might wanna think, if you decide you're gonna do all five, you might wanna think about three nights, two each night, and the third night, one candidate, and then your deliberation following, you know, to pick the finalists.
We'll figure that out.
So that's not a bad process either, to go three nights, two, two. The way it worked out, it was just coincidence, ten people invited, two bailed out, so instead of having a three-interview night, we ended up having four two-interview nights, and I think that worked, that was done, I think it worked great.
Yeah, I just don't, I don't, I don't wanna let this process roll out three or four weeks down the road, and those applicants are somewhere else.
If you pick two nights next week, let's just say, do you interview all five? You pick two nights next week, and one, one night the following week, you will not have lost anybody by then.
Okay, so we got a couple weeks.
Yeah, because the eighteenth, the one community that's closest to you will announce on the eighteenth, and then they'll start interviewing at some point. Do the math, you should be fine next week, and early the following week.
So Friday the eighteenth, excuse me, Friday the fifteenth, this Friday at eight AM, we're gonna meet. We'll get back to you with names, and we'll pick, we'll pick some dates for interviews, and I'll communicate those dates to you, and you'll get it done.
Okay.
Very good.
So I announce the names?
Mr. Pecos, thank you again for coming back to us and helping out.
I'm loving being here with you guys. I'm hoping you get a good, as good a result this time as you did last time. Wanna announce the names?
Go.
Okay. You're, and these are not in any particular orders, it's just how they happen to be in the envelopes. Ron Sinangelo, of Two Ames Trail, Holland, Mass. He is currently the town administrator in Southbridge, Massachusetts. Jack Healy, Jack has been town administrator all over the south shore. Two Twenty Two, Perches Street, Middleborough, Mass. Jack is currently sort of, kind of retired, he's semi-retired, having recently finished in Free Town as interim town administrator, turned into a two or three-year deal for Jack, and he is looking to get back in, into the profession full-time. This one, I don't think you know this person, but I hear through the grapevine, she's an excellent candidate. Julie Hebert, oh, that's right, you do know Julie. The committee was very proud to select Julie as one of the finalists. I think you all know Julie, so I won't elaborate too much, but congratulations, Julie. This really isn't fair, because I get to have all the fun, and you did all the work.
No, we did.
Okay. Uh, Michael Mullen, uh, Mike is a, currently a selectman in Rockland and he is the Norfolk County Administrator. Now, he is the assistant county administrator in his resume. I think he is right in the middle of going, um, ascending to the county administrator position from the assistant position. So we'll find out how that spins out and get back to you on that. Um, and finally, John Stanbrook. Um, John lives at Levin Opal Avenue, Middleborough, Mass, with his family. And he is currently the assistant town administrator in Mansfield, Mass. So, as you can tell, that is a pretty distinguished group of candidates that you've got. And, um, again, kudos to the committee, they've produced a really outstanding job for you. Some great people to choose from.
And you will obviously notify, I think that you need, your communications now need to be severed from Ms. Hebert because she is a candidate?
Yes.
Well, I don't think it'd be good that you're talking to her to let the board know certain things, so maybe you do that through the chairman?
So she'll continue doing her job. Yeah, right. I'll continue doing my job directly, talking to board members through the chair.
Sure, sure, okay.
But Julie will get the same information that everybody else will get, um, in terms of dates and times and things.
As far as candidates go, sure.
So here's the packets. And, uh, these are no longer confidential, obviously. These are public documents now.
Thank you.
And to the extent the press or public might ask you, uh, for copies of those, those, you know, once presented to the board, those are all public documents, so they are disclosable, anybody would like them. So, again, it's been a pleasure, Mr. Chairman. I look forward to working with you to wrap it up. And again, uh, kudos to your committee, they did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on. Well, we have, we have a 5:30 joint meeting between the Board of Selectmen and Housing Authority. Do you have a forum? Do you have a chair? Do you have a forum with your committee?
Yes.
Again, I think you need to go into, you need to convene a meeting. It'll be in session.
We'll call me into all of them. Hold the paper.
Ag.
What's up, Mr. Chairman?
Welcome, Steph. Do you want to move to the front or are you over there?
Mr. Brown. Selectman Chairman, I would just like to say that, um, I'm not sure of my place on the Housing Committee right now because I'm not an elected official, I'm appointed by the governor. And that seems to have had a lapse. So I'll, I'll vote or whatever, but whatever determination your board has with that.
You were appointed but not terminated, but you've not been reappointed?
I wasn't terminated, but I wasn't reappointed this year. And it seems like they're waiting on that right now. They're still making me sign things and do things, but I'm, I just want to make sure the public knows I, I'm not sure of my place.
Okay, all right.
So, and that you know.
Thank you.
We still, we still have a forum.
Okay, all right, Mr. Racine, why don't you come up or bring your whole board up or however you want to do this. I know there's a vacancy on the Housing Authority, is there a candidate for that position?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Racine?
So what I, what I would like to do is, uh, we'd like to have Stephanie here appointed on, on the board.
Okay.
Uh, she's been wanting to serve on the committee for quite a number of years, but she's been working too hard and now she's, she has time, so she wants to serve. And we appreciate your vote, with Stephanie here.
And has, has your committee voted? No, we're, we're meeting together, right?
No, we're meeting together.
And this is to replace Mr. Mulvey?
Mr. Mulvey.
Yes, Mr. Mulvey.
Okay.
All right, and you're a resident, you're obviously a resident?
Yeah, 44 years.
Affiliated, not affiliated with the Housing Authority? You said you wanted to do it for years or?
No, I just wanted to do something in the town.
She would, she would have said on any committee.
Yeah, so it's, it's time. I retired from the courthouse after 25 years. I work for myself now. I still live in town, my parents still live in town.
Okay.
And, um, and he had caught me one night and said, how about the housing?
Yeah, I got something for you to do.
Yeah.
That's how he is, he does that to people.
So I, I think you need a majority of the votes from both committees, is that?
They need to open their vote, or open their meeting.
Yeah, they did, I think they did that, yeah.
I weren't here.
That was in the back, they did, yep, they opened, right, you opened, motions, that kind of all that stuff in the back, right? Yes, I thought I heard that, right. So, um, you've made a, you'd like to nominate her as, what's your full name? I'm sorry, I didn't.
Stephanie Bonjess.
My main commotion is, I like Stephanie here, I'll point out Stephanie.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second?
It's a roll.
Aye.
It's a roll call vote? All right, roll, roll call vote.
What do you like, Racine?
Yep, Racine's an aye.
Andrew Gomes, aye.
An aye.
Tebelle Souza, aye.
Aye.
David DeRoche, aye.
Kevin Gasper, aye.
Roger Prowl, an aye. Mr. Brown?
And if my vote does count, I'm in.
And Robert Brown's an aye, all right. All right, if it counts.
Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you, congratulations. Hard to find people interested in doing things sometimes, so appreciate it. Very thankful, good luck.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we adjourn the meeting?
Yeah, you can. Yeah, you can adjourn your meeting, yeah, adjourn your meeting.
What's your turn, aye?
Okay, thanks.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we've got the Soil Board Permit Approval, do we have that? Has that been distributed or is it? Do we have any interns? I'm on the Soil Board, so I'm aware of what it is. So let me just, let me just go to my notes and I'll, I'll talk about this, I think it's important. So, um, so this is, this is the, um, this is the permit for the PJ Keating Quarry, for their annual soil permit. This is for the year ended December 31st, 2019. So we are, like last year, we're, we're well behind in approving this permit. Um, and really, uh, just trying to attach to the permit to, to make this process a little bit more formal and scientific, um, to build some requirements in this, uh, in this permit that comply with all applicable laws and regulations. As you know, the quarry's been, uh, been somewhat controversial, more so the last two years. And it's, it's attracted a lot of public attention with their plan to move the, um, the asphalt plant up near the road. So the Soil Board, I think largely in response to that, has said, okay, you know, you, you can do that, it's in compliance with zoning and, um, you can get a building permit to do that. But, you know, the, the game's going to change a little bit because, you know, we, we learned that your neighbors are really not happy with the way you're running your business there. And, um, it, it seems they are trying real hard to comply with, um, with the law, to keep their neighbors happy, to, to sweep the street, to, to reduce dust emissions, to shut down operations when, um, the wind is blowing, to, you know, basically be a good neighbor. They've established, they've established a, um, they've established a telephone line where, where neighbors can, can call if they've got an issue. Um, management's changed there, the gentleman that was, uh, Kevin Yucan, who was the lead guy there, has left PJ Keating, doing something else. They, they brought in a team of five to the Soil Board meeting. Um, and, you know, one of the things that the Soil Board asked them was, you know, we need a, similar to what we do with solar farms. We need a decommissioning plan for the, for the, for the quarry. What's it going to be when it's no longer quarry? And, um, and we want to bond the back that. The Soil Board for too long has accepted a 20-year-old bond that just, you know, we've asked to have that reviewed by the town's legal counsel. And we've asked them to provide evidence that, you know, they moved it, I think, from $880,000 to a million. You know, give us evidence that a million dollars is enough money to shut down that quarry. And I, I don't believe it's anywhere near enough money to shut down a quarry, but, um.
Right.
So it's, it's a work in process. The, the Soil Board, working with the Board of Health, is trying to figure out a plan to bring on a second part-time health agent. And that individual's responsibility would be to largely monitor the quarry. Not exclusively, but largely monitor the quarry. Um, the, the fee for the permit is $16,000, um, which has gone up from prior years. And, you know, we're trying to get the cost of this permit to help fund that position. So that position's not been created yet, but, you know, what you're going to see in this permit is, is a lot of language. Um, we used our, and to help us understand what the appropriate laws are that, that, that regulate the quarry. We've built a requirement that they're always operating in compliance with all of those laws into the Soil Board permit. So this is, this has gotten a lot more, um, a lot more formal than it used to be. And we'll, and we'll continue to evolve. We, um, we want the quarry to operate in Akushnet successfully, but we need them to be a good neighbor. And, um, and I, I think that is happening. So, um, so we're looking to approve, the Soil Board has approved this permit. We're looking for the Board of Selectmen to approve this permit. Uh, the permit will expire December 31st, 2019. The goal would be that, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
The goal, yep, yep, you read that day correctly. The goal, the goal would be to, to get this, to get this on a cycle where they're, you know, they've got a good permit when they're operating. They're not going to shut down January 1st, that's clear. But we really want to get them a permit, you know, well before November 12th next year.
Right.
And get this, you know.
First quarter of the year.
Yeah.
Don't we do soil permits every year?
We've got two, we've got two in town. We've got two in town.
We just do Pico, Pico, they still have one, I think, this past year.
Yeah, they did.
We're down to two now. We only, we only approved two.
Pico and the quarry.
Yeah, I believe so.
Well, when do we do this? I thought we did this so it was, it was on track.
We do them earlier, but it doesn't come from us, it comes from the soil.
Comes from soil, but last year it was about this time. Last year it was very late.
They give twice a year.
So what happens when this expires?
It might have been actually, the 28, actually the 2018 permit might have been approved in 2019.
Can I ask a question? When this expires in six weeks, we'll call it, right to the end of the year, that's all this is good for?
Correct.
What do we, what do we, what are they operating on from January 1st on?
Goodwill, I guess.
No, so why would we just make the renewal January 1st again then? And get that back in place so they are operating under a, a, a valid permit? We can't just keep leaving these windows open?
Well, we're trying, we're trying to change it. It's, it's, um, I mean, the process has been, we are trying to, you know, this permit has changed dramatically from what it was.
Yeah, I know, it's, it's been great work.
And there's a lot of, I mean, all of this stuff here, conditions for the permit, all the references to the appropriate laws that has just been added. So, you know, the goal is going to be again, to get it done, get it done in the first quarter. Part of it, we left the last meeting. Um, you know, we, we, is the bond sufficient? We wanted Copeland and Page to review, uh, to review the bond. I mean, we talked about, there are some things, you know, people talk about the fact that, you know, PJ, there's a lot of it as urban legend, is what, yeah, their operations. And, you know, we talked about the fact that there was a, there's a belief that PJ Keating can only do public work at night. They're unaware of that restriction. So the Soil Board was of the opinion that that was, that there's nothing in writing that says you can only operate, you can only do public work at night. So the Soil Board, under the bylaw, has the ability to say, you can't operate at night at all. Um, so it's, it's, it's complicated.
Yeah, you've got, you've got come a long way.
We're trying to get, we're trying to get, we're trying, Copeland Page has got to review the bond they've given us, um, and, and, and they need to come back to us. I think we've got a date for the next Soil Board meeting. They need to come back to us with justification for why a million-dollar bond is enough. And I, I don't believe a million-dollar bond is enough. So, um, a couple of things, so we're keeping this on a short leash. Um, but I would, I would suggest we renew the, the bond as, as suggested by the Soil Board and we'll keep, uh, making it a little bit better every day.
I make a motion to approve the PJ Keating Soil Board permit as presented.
And I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Do you want to sign?
Please. All right, back to the agenda. Uh, item three, we've got a citizen interest to be appointed to the Finance Committee. And I think they've got eight people on and.
Eight people, no.
I think three.
Is he?
There's eight, there's nine.
Oh, is he nine?
Finance Committee's nine, yeah.
Has the Finance Committee met with the candidate yet?
Mr. St. Jean has met with him.
Okay.
Um, Mr. St. Jean was here on the, but he hasn't.
Is the candidate here?
I don't think so.
Okay, I thought you were waving, okay.
Mr. St. Jean didn't meet with him and he said.
It's not to you.
He really liked what he had to say and he said he was going to attend the Finance Committee meeting before he being appointed.
Okay.
So I think he.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to give the, the, when I went on the Finance Committee, they interviewed me and it just seems to be something that's happened in the past, that Finance Committee prescreens the people here for them. So, um, so, so they're fine with it? Is, I'm, I'm sorry, who is the, who is the candidate?
His name is Ron Melbourne.
I'm sorry, I don't know that, I think I know one, actually, I know one. Um, is there a motion to, uh, appoint Mr. Melbourne to the Finance Committee?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to appoint Ron Melbourne to the Finance Committee for the three-year term ending in 2022 as presented.
Is there a second, Mr. Gasper? Further discussion?
Just making sure the confirmation of the 2022 expiration is correct.
I did check with Pam Lottin and she said yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Mr. Melbourne, for stepping forward. All right, item four, under new business agreement between Town of Lakeville and Akushnet for the animal, annual, animal shelter. And this is a standard agreement, we refresh every year, any changes from prior years?
Not, I've read it all through, don't think there's any changes?
It's a standard agreement we sign every year, it's the same thing.
I called Ms. Tomlinson, Mr. Chairman, and confirmed that she's okay with it. She says, if, good to go. So I'll make a motion to approve the agreement between the Town of Lakeville and Akushnet for the use of the animal shelter as presented.
And I'll second that motion.
Second, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
That passes. Item five, under new business, is approval of the memorandum for agreement for ASME Union Local 851 dispatchers and dispatchers and others, correct? So, um.
What's in those?
Everybody covered by the ASME, I asked that question myself.
Yeah, ASME is town hall, um, employees, um, and the library.
But this is just reference to dispatchers, right?
This, yeah, this is dispatchers, but it's the, the memorandum of agreement is for the entire union. But it's, it's.
Because they fall on the ASME.